Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and I'll provide the opening remarks. Just three quick things before we get started. Of course, it is Election Day today. We want to make sure everyone is getting out to vote. Polls were open eight until eight o'clock tonight, so there's still time. Bus rides are free. Lyft and Uber are discounted. There's no excuse not to go. My youngest daughter is voting in her first election. It reminds us, reminds me how important responsibility this is for everyone and what a privilege it is for everyone. So please do that today if you have not already. Secondly, I want to note that the council does not meet next week because of Veterans' Day. So I want to thank all of our veterans and those that have served our country. Also note that the city has an event on Thursday at six o'clock at Memorial Park called Veterans Shine On in honor, in honor of our veterans in the community. I encourage you to attend that if you're able. And then, of course, on Monday, actual Veterans' Day, eleven o'clock at Memorial Park as well, is the Veterans' Day ceremony put on by the American Legion Post Number One. And then lastly, I just want to recognize three notable Omahans who have passed in the last week. Commissioner, longtime Douglas County Commissioner George Mills. Longtime NRD Director and former Chief of Staff to Jim Suttl, Steve Altman's. And then lastly, John Goschak, the former publisher of the Omaha World Herald and a philanthropist that did many great things in our community, all have passed. So we wanted to note those significant individuals today and let their families know that our thoughts and prayers are with them. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate. If you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, please see our building commission representative here for listing devices. Our way to have closed captioning in the back of the room as well.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Penthouse located at 4530 South 84th Street.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue here on behalf of the applicant. Cortez, excuse me, Cortez Bar LLC, which does business as the Penthouse Lounge. This is a new application on a longstanding old location bar, the Penthouse Lounge. The new owner, Mr. Cortez Hernandez, is very excited about embarking on this new career and this new venture. The operating hours and all things about the lounge will remain consistent with the operations as they currently are. If council members have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class I liquor license for Casa Jalisco Mexican Bar and Grill located at 14242 Fort Street, Suites 108 and 109.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Athfaya. I'm co-owner. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. And your address, two, just for the record?
It's 14242 Fort Street, Suite 109, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Motion to waive Rule Seven. And motion to approve with the waiver.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve waiving Rule Seven in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for Edge of the Universe located at 6070 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Adam Benazal of Edge of the Universe, 6070 Maple Street, owner, operator.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion, a second to approve. Mr. Harding, you're recognized. Okay. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a liquor license addition application for Blue Sushi Saki Grill located at 16939 Wright Plaza, Suites 103 and 108, to add an indoor and outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Belk. We'll get you off mute here in a minute. Okay, try that. I think you might be on mute on your end and possibly. I think we're still having difficulty hearing you there. All right, we'll see if we can't figure that out on our end. I'll come back to you here in a second. Any other proponents that want to speak in the audience? Seeing none, any opponents? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We'll try you one more time, Mr. Belk. Want to see if that works? All right, we're still not hearing you, but I'm not sure we're going to have any questions. I'm going to recognize Mr. Harding.
Actually, just for an addition to an existing. So I know we can't, we can't hear him right now, but I'm sure he'd be saying he's here to answer any questions. And I'm getting the thumbs up.
Thumbs up, yeah. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero.
Your testimony was very effective. Good job. Good luck.
Items ten through twelve can be considered together for Majestic 178, located south of 175th Street and Blue Heron Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item ten, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item twelve, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items ten through twelve are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. It's hard to follow that presentation, but I'll be brief. Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items ten through twelve are approved, seven to zero. Items thirteen through fifteen can be considered together for property located northwest of 24th and Pratt Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item thirteen, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a PUR overlay district. Item fourteen, an ordinance to rescind the ACI overlay district for this property. Item fifteen, an ordinance to repeal the PUR overlay district in a R5 AC1 district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on items thirteen through fifteen are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Joe Deltlos with TD2, 10836 Old Mill Road, here representing the applicant. We're here to ask for an amendment to the PUR and repeal the ACI PUR overlay on a certain piece of the property for a future lot line adjustment. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Items thirteen through fifteen are approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items sixteen through twenty-five were held on October 29th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items sixteen through twenty-five are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty-six through thirty-five are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items twenty-six through thirty-five.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Ames. I'm here for item number twenty-six. Vincenzo's, I represent 15701 Pacific Street. I am the applicant. Here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed? There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-six through thirty-five are approved, seven to zero.
I did. You had the opportunity. Those items are now passed. You may not. Next item, please.
Item thirty-six, an ordinance to amend Section 44-151 of the Omaha Municipal Code to adopt the 2023 National Electrical Code. A is an amendment requested by the Law Department. B is amendment requested by council members Begley and Festerson.
The vote on number thirty-six is today. There are two amendments, A and Amendment B. Mr. Begley, I see your light is on. You are recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I guess to speak to the amendment of the whole that Council President Festerson and I did, they had a debate in the legislature, I guess, at the committee regarding what the codes were going to look like, and they, when they passed it out of the committee, my understanding was that they carved out some things that were originally discussed, and that's our amendment of the whole is to put those back in. I guess a couple of questions for John, if you can come down, please. Name and address for that.
John Nabel, 8946 L Street.
John, good afternoon.
Thanks.
So we discussed this a little bit last week, and the Metro Omaha Builders Association, I think they got some representatives here today we'll have some discussion with as well. But if you want to walk through just the reasons that the amendment of the whole was put in to include what was left out and carved out in Lincoln, I guess some points were made. I guess I'll just go through them. The cost, first speak to the cost. There was a, you had mentioned $700 was the cost. Can you tell us again where you came up with that cost? And was that testified to in Lincoln?
Yeah, so that was testified to in Lincoln. That was from the State Electrical Division. That was their estimate of cost increase with the adoption. I went back last week and I went to a wholesaler and a local retailer to see if I could get a good gauge on what that material cost would be. And I actually do have that, and I was a little off. The retailer, if you were to go to a big box store, the cost difference was $594. And the wholesaler, the cost difference was $1,013. So a savvy contractor would probably be able to get it in that $700 range.
Okay, and where would they go for, to get these products?
It's all in town. They were all readily available. You could go west Omaha, you could go to the big box stores and get them.
Okay. And they're readily available, or is there issues with supply chain or manufacturing or any things that builders can run into?
If you look back when the ordinance was, excuse me, when the code was originally up for adoption in 2020, there was issues with supply chains, that there was that concern, but that has been rectified. They're readily available now, and even in the testimony in 2023, there was two manufacturers at that, at that hearing in Lincoln, and they both build these parts in Nebraska. And they testified that that wouldn't be an issue. And actually, they said that as this gets implemented across the country, the older parts would be an issue, just because they wouldn't, would no longer be manufacturing because most states would have adopted the new code. And I suppose the cost increase would be going up on the other direction of the existing parts, the older parts.
Okay. And speak to what was carved out in Lincoln, that our amendment is trying to put that back in here is why we're discussing this today.
Sure.
Go through those things again for us. And why, why the importance of the safety parts amongst others?
Oh, for sure. So the bulk of it was GFI protections for all receptacles in basements and 250-volt receptacles in the home. There was a surge protector for a whole home included in that, and then emergency disconnect on the outside of a house. Primarily, that was for firefighters to disconnect power before they go in and fight that fire. The GFI side of it was specifically life safety issues. And actually, I spoke last week that all this stuff was in the 2020 adoption. Looking back, there was an amendment to that GFI branch circuit section in 2023 that would be included if we, if we did away with the carve-outs. And looking at that, they actually included, it wasn't, right now, it's, anything within six feet of a sink is required to be GFI protected. They amended it in 2023 to be any piece of, any receptacle inside a food prep or kitchen area. And if you look at the reason being, the committee, I don't know if anybody's familiar with how these codes are adopted. It's about a two-year process. Industry experts from all parts of the industry get together on a committee and find out what we're wrong, what's going wrong, take the public comment, and give their recommendations. The recommendation that they gave for the 2023 adoption was pretty specific to the life safety of it all. And in their committee statement, they said 104 electrocutions from 2011 to 2020, of which 81% were working on an appliance or other type of equipment. So that code was specifically used to create a safer industry, to create a safer environment inside our homes. And that's specifically what it is, is life safety that's being carved out here.
Okay. And we're one of 50 states. How do other states compare specifically to those carve-outs that were done in the legislature in Nebraska? Is that prevalent in all 50 states? Did they carve them out? Or what, do you know the ratio of that?
Each state gets to, gets to adopt the code at their, during their process. And right now, 37 states have adopted the 2020 or the 2023 version of the National Electric Code.
And those 37 states that were adopting the NEA code, are those carve-outs included in what those 37 states included?
Not to my knowledge. They adopted the full code.
Okay. And in your view, you know, we can debate on, certainly, we're all in favor of affordable housing. This isn't anti-affordable housing, correct?
It's a few hundred dollars. So I would, in the grand scheme of things, I don't know what an affordable house costs anymore. It's been a while since I bought one, but a few hundred dollars to make it a safer home, I don't think is an overrun.
And again, I, in respect to safety of, I think I've read articles in the last few days on kids have been electrocuted. Talk a little bit about accidents that can happen in the home of playing hide-and-seek or other things that tragedies happen that can be prevented with what we're talking about here today.
So a lot of the reasoning why you want a GFI is because, I think I spoke to it last week, the breakers we currently have in our house that aren't GFI, they're just a breaker that determines whether or not more power is going through a circuit than is allowed, and that's to protect the wire, to make sure the wire doesn't melt and start a fire. The GFI breaker is a different type of breaker. Consider it like a smart breaker. It reads the amount of electricity coming back on the neutral side. So the electricity goes out and unused stuff comes back. It reads that, and if there's discrepancy of what went out to come back, it would trip that circuit. So it would make it now a safe circuit if, in case a child or even a person working on that equipment was to get electrocuted, they would, the circuit would understand that and it would trip it and cut power.
Okay, so again, it's a safety measure that we're looking to implement here that would prevent those kinds of things. So if a young family wants to buy a house, it's a big decision. And if you're building one, a lot of times, maybe families don't understand, if you're not an electrician, like an expert like you are, on what the safety ramifications are if you have this or you don't have this. What you guys talked about in the legislature, and they're here today to advocate for these items that we want to put back in, is specific to safety, that I know the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, that's the bedrock of, amongst other things, that they were founded on. And that's simply what you articulated in Lincoln, and you're articulating here today, is for safety.
Yes, yeah, these ones specifically are safety. There's other codes out there that can be discussed, but as it is today, the carve-outs are definitely designed for life safety issues.
Okay. There's some more lights on. I might have some more questions, but that's all I have for you for now. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I wanted to kind of talk about the affordability, and I'll call you up, John, if I need you.
Okay.
I want to talk about affordable housing. As Mr. Begley mentioned, I think all of us up here ran at some point in our campaigns on affordable housing. Maybe not Mr. Hug because he ran for Metro Community College Board, but I'm sure he'll be running on affordable housing coming forward. But it's important to us. It's very important to us to have affordable housing. And I mean, we've done things like, we've sat up here and talked about affordable housing time and time again. We were mandated by the state to come up with an affordable, a housing affordability action plan. And we put teams together of people to try to identify areas where our builders could make housing more affordable, whether it be through the development process or through the building process or even in the real estate sales process. And we're not seeing a lot of movement on that, unfortunately. We've seen a little bit. We passed an ADU ordinance, which will help with, you know, some land use of, but we haven't seen a lot coming out on housing affordability. And I know that committees and the teams are working hard. I know they're trying to put those things together. But I think we're sending a confusing message. If we don't adopt, if we, if we adopt this amendment, if we put this, these carve-outs back into the code, we're sending a very confusing message to the teams that are out there trying to identify affordable housing. To me, this is the kind of thing that I would expect those committees to come back to us and say, this is what we can identify as helping make houses affordable. You know, I, I think about my grandkids, and I think about, you know, comments that I hear a lot are, well, $700 isn't that big of a deal in the grand scheme of things. You know, Mr. Hug said that. And I get that, you know, $1,000 on a $300,000 house might not be a big deal. $2,000 on a $300,000 house might not be a big deal. But it is to my grandkid who's trying to qualify for an entry-level house that costs in excess of $300,000. And so if we can identify ways to make housing more affordable, reduce the costs, I mean, the builders aren't going to, they're not going to make an extra $1,000 or $2,000 on this, on this code change. They're going to take that cost, add it to the cost of the house, mark it up, and then sell their house based on those costs. So, you know, I think we need to really take a hard look at what we're doing today. And I would love to have, I'd like to invite Nick Dolphins to come up and maybe, Mark, you'd want to come up with him, just to talk to us about, you know, you both are housing experts in Omaha. You're, what I would consider production-type builders. You're not a custom home builder. You're not building, you know, $3 million homes. Mark might be, but Nick, you're building more in the 400,000, 500,000. You know, what would be considered an entry level? Or maybe, Nick, I'm sorry, an entry level or maybe a first-time step up? But these are costs that are real to you, and I want you to speak to it.
Okay. Nick Dolphins, 2637 South 158th Plaza, representing Moba. Yeah, these are real costs. We do all sorts of interior analysis on how to save costs at every step of the way. So when I do hear comments like, well, it's only $700, and that's not much for a $350,000 house, it's concerning because you really do have to question that every step of the way for the sake of affordable housing. Our numbers are $1,265, and that's from my electrician who does do almost all of the residential work in town. And he's a union electrician. He was a little upset he was not asked for his number since he's the one doing a lot of that work. But $1,265 is very significant. And looking at what we do, that's a range in a microwave in a home. It's all the interior doors of a normal-sized home, all the shelving, half the carpet cost or a patio. So those are real dollars that affect it. And what concerns me is we're all worried about life safety. We're all worried about our kids. I have kids. We're all worried about our grandkids. But we're all going home to homes that don't have any of this stuff in it. So do you feel safe when you go home? I do. So I think a critical part of this process, every single time we do this, and Anna's been great with this, where we meet and sit down and go through the building code before we adopt a new building code, and what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. That carve-out process is a critical process. The National Association of Home Builders publishes a document every time. You can, you can find that, if you want to do more research, it's called Suggested Amendments to the 2023 National Electric Code. They had 12 carve-outs that they recommend with facts supporting in the sake of affordable housing, and we landed on five of those with the state. So that's what we're proposing, that we keep those in there.
Mark, do you want to have, add anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I'll just start with, you had mentioned, and I think it was John. I apologize, is that right, John? Yeah, there's testimony on a much bigger scale at the state level. This has already been discussed and went through, and they agreed to put these amendments in there for a reason. So, Mr. Begley, you brought up, you know, four, four questions. I'm going to go over each one of them. Talked about cost, safety, other states, then you talked about affordable housing. So when we talk about $700 is what, you know, these materials cost if you go to Lowe's, Menards, or whatever. That's just the material, okay? To buy that there, you have a labor part of this. Then you have, you know, the electrician's going to make profit on that. I'm going to take that cost, I'm going to put it in my home, and then I want to make a profit on it. And again, that's how we get to this, all of a sudden, it's $2,000. So when it's mentioned, you know, I'll quote, "a few hundred dollars", we're not talking about, to me, a few hundred dollars is $200, okay? It's not 700, which is It's not seven hundred, which is really isn't seven hundred, because then it's fifteen hundred and now all of a sudden it's two hundred dollars to our buyer. Okay, so that cost is not accurate that was being discussed. Safety, okay? Anna Beswayazny, her job is safety. So you all are very blessed with Anna. And prior to that, Jay Davis came up here many times talking about code amendments and safety. Okay, and I'll tell you that you guys, when I say you're blessed, the two best people that I've worked with across any jurisdiction around Omaha, whether it's Bellevue, Sarpy County, Papillion, we've testified all over Omaha. You guys have been blessed. So I'm telling you, listen to what Anna is telling you. That's her job, okay? She represents you. Listen to Anna. Okay, number three, when you talk about the other states, the thirty-seven other states, and how many of those it was asked have had amendments taking stuff out? I guarantee you there are. The the quote was, "I don't think any of them have." Okay, is that is that what you're gonna go off of? "I don't think any of them have?" Okay, that that's, that that doesn't make sense, that you're making decisions off of "I don't think," okay? And then the last thing, you know, just the whole affordable housing. If you're gonna take these amendments out, don't talk about affordable housing anymore, because it doesn't make sense, okay? You're in complete contradiction, and here's where I'm gonna disagree with Don. He said, "You're sending a confusing message." You're not sending a confusing message. You're saying, "I don't care about affordable housing." That's the message, period. That's all I have. Any questions?
Mark, just your full name and address.
I apologize. I've kind of been up here before. So, Mark Stidola, 19211 Grand Avenue Circle. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I would like to have Anna come up come up again. I just, I just, you know, Mark mentioned your ability and the job that you do here at the city. And I I just would like to have you speak to the safety issue as well, because I don't want to go home to my house and be concerned that, you know, the outlet on the end of my island is unsafe. And and yet, in the 23 code, one of the carve-outs that the builders missed when they were negotiating on these was the outlet on the side of an island. Now it has to be in a two hundred dollar device on top of the countertop. And we missed that one. So that one, I think, is in the code. I think we're gonna have to enforce that one, as far as I know. But talk about talk about safety and how it relates to these five carve-outs.
Anna Beswayazny, Planning Department. I would say that the 2017 NEC is a very safe electrical code. We're continuing to build to the 2017 electrical code. The houses that are being built presently are safe. They're safer than my house that was built in 1964. God forbid that any of you come and look at my electrical work, not my work, but the work that was done there. But I do feel safe going to my own home, and I think a lot of these safety features, while well-intentioned, a lot of the problems that caused the fires are not necessarily the outlets. There are a lot of the old cables for appliances, older appliances, people not having proper working smoke detectors in their houses, you know, some of the things like that. Yes, kids will get into things, but I think the safest electricity may be no electricity. And I don't think that's where we want to go. To the to the amendments that we're proposing, I would say, yes, some of them are sold as being life safety issues. I would be hard-pressed to consider a whole-house search protection to be a life safety issue. I think that's more of a property protection issue. And, you know, get, given the fact that the insurance companies are heavily involved in the code update process, the insurance companies have a vested interest in having a lot of these newer products in the homes, because they are constantly calling us to try and get out of doing these code updates. They're they're constantly trying to compare what we have adopted to what they want to pay for. And, you know, we we get an awful lot of calls from, not necessarily on the electrical side of things, but with regards to other code issues. We get a lot of calls from insurance companies, basically fighting with us as to what we have adopted in our codes or amended into our codes or amended out of our codes. So they have a vested interest in this as well. And I would argue that what we have proposed here with the carve-outs that the state adopted is a very safe code. I have no concerns with enforcing this particular code with the provisions that we've amended out of it. And I feel comfortable recommending it to this council.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions for now. I might come back.
Thank you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
John, batter up. Last week, I apologize, I kind of put you on the spot. And when I was talking about the emergency disconnect, I referred to it as external disconnect. And I I was discussing that I believed Iowa had had it in their code for a good length of time. Since last week, have you had an opportunity to look at Iowa code or?
Yeah, so Iowa did adopt the full version of the 2020 code in 2021. So they have been, they have been implementing it with that disconnect since 2021.
Do you know if it's required in any other states outside of Iowa?
Anybody that adopted the 2020 version and the 2023 version would be using that pending any carve-outs. I know Nebraska has carved it out. I'm not sure, but I can start digging into it. It's gonna be a minute. But yeah, I know specifically the Iowa one, just because it was in, was asked last week and it's in close proximity. We know our contractors are keeping up with that over there, too.
I believe it was Mark mentioned that his electrical contractor is an IBW-represented contractor. He did not mention the name of it, but you do represent contractors.
Yes, yes. And I don't want to guide him away from using that contractor. But yeah, dozens of contractors use use our labor, so if he's unsatisfied with one, I suppose go to the next one.
Have you spoken to any of the contractors specifically about this?
No, we we reached out as the code was going on to see if there was anything. I know our, one of our contractors sits on the State Electrical Board, and he was down there to testify in 2023 as approving a full adoption. So I know our contractors are, I guess, of mixed minds, but I know some want it.
Okay, thanks, John. That's all I got for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
As long as you're right there, let me ask you just one quick question. I wanted to make sure I I heard your numbers right. You, I think you quoted numbers of electrical accidents. Can you give me that? What was that amount and the term?
So, and this was from the the Code Adoption Committee as they're developing these code adoptions. They said they had, this is from the CPSC database. I'm not sure where the CPSC is, but I'm assuming it's something that they're looking at. Hundred and four electrocutions from 2011 to 2020, of which eighty-one percent were working on the appliances or equipment. So that tells me that eighty-one percent of these could be averted if we adopt a code that requires some type of GFJ protection. And to Anna's point, it's not the outlet, it's the equipment that's being used. And if we know we can provide that type of protection for a minimal cost, yes, it is minimal compared to a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house.
Okay, thanks. And I thought I heard the numbers right, but thank you. I appreciate that. Actually, I'm gonna ask Anna to come back up. And I'll just, as Anna's coming back up, I'll note that that's a hundred and four of those accidents over ten years. And I don't know if that was state or national, but anyway. Anna, if you could, so we fully understand. I appreciate what you just said previously when you were up here. But walk us through the process, how this, how we got to the point where it is, where where this is down in front of the state, the amendments are made or are negotiated. And if you could, walk us through the process of how we got to this point, then.
Okay. Anna Beswayazny, Planning Department. In, I believe it was January or February of 2023, the state legislature had proposed to adopt the 2023 National Electrical Code. And they held a public hearing on that particular date. IBW was there to testify. Craig with the State Board was there to testify. You know, we had home builders that were testifying. I think the City of Lincoln was not there. So they held a the public hearing on the, in 2023. It was not adopted that particular year. And then in 2024, they were working on the State Electrical Board with regards to licensing for electricians and a reciprocity agreement that they had with other states. And at that point, they were looking to adopt to the 2023 in order to stay current with that particular licensing agreement. I don't recall what the name of that particular contingent is, but but that's how it came about. And so as part of that licensing issue, they then rolled the adoption or moving to the 2023 code as an amendment to that legislative bill. And in that legislative amendment, they had worked with the home builders, and I'm not sure if they had other organizations that they had as part of that conversation or not. But the home builders and, to my understanding, the State Board had come to an agreement that these particular amendments to the electrical code, which essentially rolled back residential provisions to the 2017 electrical code. The state was in agreement with the home builders that those amendments would be safe for the state of Nebraska. And that's what was voted on down at the state legislature. It passed the legislature. It was signed by Governor Pillen, and then it became effective August 1st, 2024.
All right, thank you. And so that started, this process really started in 2023, right? So a year and a half later.
Yes.
Basically, when we get to August 1st, when it was officially adopted by the state. So it was, it was, so from that, I would say, it seems like a lot of what we've discussed, and I think you said it earlier, too, is a lot of these are not necessarily just based upon life safety issues. It's it's making sure that we have an effective code that is safe. But some of these areas that have been amended out are not necessarily life-threatening or life-saving issues in the eyes of the state at the, in the adoption of this.
That would be my interpretation of what the state adopted.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, I'll ask, oh, actually, before you go. So you've been working for the city how long?
Twelve years, just over twelve years.
So you've been through this process before, both in electrical and plumbing and and other other areas as it relates to code?
Yeah, we adopted, we we updated the mechanical code, the building code, the residential code, the energy code, and now the electrical code. I think this is the second round for the electrical code. Because when I first came in, I think we moved to the 2017 NEC at that time. And IBW also at that time requested that we adopt it without any amendments. And at that point, we had not proposed any amendments to the 2017 code.
Right. But in others, I mean, there have been other amendments before in this process.
Absolutely. And that's the nature of the codes, that the local jurisdiction has, it's it's what we call a model code. So you take this model code and you have the ability, if you choose to do so, to amend it so that it makes more sense for the local jurisdiction.
And and what the state passes is really at a minimum, correct? The the code. So if 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 someone wanted to go above that, not not, I mean, the local jurisdiction or if if a builder in particular wanted to go above that, they can build to something higher than what.
Absolutely. If somebody wants to incorporate these things as part of their project, they are free to do that.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. I'm gonna ask the Law Department a couple procedural issues now.
Mackenzie Law Department.
Thank you. So for the record, I guess, Amendment A really just kind of the, what's proposed as Amendment A is really just kind of a cleanup on some language that was in the title or somewhere in the header.
Yeah, the or the code section had been mislabeled.
Okay, so and then Amendment B is is that that was requested by Councilmember Begley and Festerson to add back in those provisions that were taken out by the state and approved by the state for the electrical code.
Right, that their their request to law was to remove the exemptions that were in the state law and then in the original form of the ordinance.
Okay, so I said add back in, but same same thing. If this were, if this were not passed today, the amendment were not passed today, what would be the effect of 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 what's in front of us today? Or I think you're probably gonna say, we have to pass something, one way or the other, we'll take an action on something.
Is your question if Agenda Item 36B doesn't pass or the entire ordinance doesn't?
If, well, the entire ordinance.
If the entire ordinance does not pass today, then we've not adopted the state's code. And according to state law, Nebraska revised statute 81-2125. And since that brings the state inspectors into play. Currently, state inspectors don't get involved in our work, because that's handled by the city inspectors. But if we have a code that's basically not in compliance or not consistent, it's probably a better term with their code, then we subject ourselves, the city does, to state inspections.
Okay, and that's, and maybe I should have had Anna up here at the same time, because you don't need to come up, Anna. But but then what that means is state inspectors would have to be doing those inspections, correct?
That would be my understanding, but you're probably correct in that Anna would probably be the best person to answer that.
I will ask Anna.
But we would be, we we're not subject to them if we're in compliance to their inspections. But if we're not in compliance, then we are subject to their inspections.
Okay. And then Anna, so I'll probably spoon-feed the the question to you in this way to say that if if that were the case, and we're waiting, and the city inspectors, who would probably be, they get it on their schedule and they're out there the next day, compared to if the state were doing that. I'm assuming that would be a longer process timewise.
Anna Beswayazny, Planning Department. Yes. For for our inspectors, once we receive an inspection request, it typically goes on the schedule for the next day for the inspectors to get out there. So we have a 24-hour turnaround, essentially. I don't know what the wait time is for state inspections, but I can only presume that it would be longer than the 24 hours that we have for inspections, given the fact that I don't believe they would have enough staff capacity to handle the entire city of Omaha in addition to the state.
Okay. All right, thank you. I won't ask Mark or or Nick to come up, but I'll just make the assumption, unless I see them nodding no, that time is money, and that's an additional cost that might go into a project. And and as we're waiting for inspectors to come out and make those those inspections, and it could be days, or it could be weeks, or it could be whatever, that's just adding cost to the project as well, too. And gosh darn it, Anna, I was gonna ask you one more, but I'll just, what I was gonna ask was, what the state, no, you don't need to, but what the state has adopted is is a safe plan. So I I don't think the state would be adopting something that they didn't deem to be safe. Then I'll ask Perry Nealon to to come up as well, too. And I think, Perry, you're here to represent or in part to the Omaha-area board. or in part to the Omaha area Board of Realtors. And just wanted to have you also address maybe how this affects housing stock, be it affordable and/or otherwise.
Yeah. Thank you. Perry Nealan here on behalf of Welcome Home Coalition, actually of which Omaha Area Board of Realtors is a member. 11830 Nicholas Street. Welcome Home Coalition is lenders, developers, NIFA, and others with, with the Realtors trying to find up new ways to look at how we handle new construction housing and what the regulatory environment is. And this is a perfect example that goes to the heart of what we're talking about and, and trying to educate folks on. It is the choice between nice-to-haves and housing affordability. And you have that choice today. Governor Pillen often cites a UNO study that mentions that 32.8% of the cost of a new construction house is to satisfy government regulations. National Association of Home Builders, my friend Mr. Dolphins left me a couple bullet points left here. National Association of Home Builders study from 2023, $1,000 increase in the price of a home prices out 435 households. So for this little thing that's only $700, it's only $1,200, it's only $2,000, whatever it is, you're pricing out 435 households. So don't think that it's just a couple hundred bucks or just a couple thousand dollars. That has real consequences when it comes to getting approved for that loan. It is housing affordability death by a thousand cuts. When we keep saying it's only a few hundred dollars, it's only a couple thousand dollars. And I appreciate what Mr. Rowe is saying, looking for a new house for $300,000. The average sold new construction price in the Omaha area in the last 12 months, $471,000. So we can't keep adding to this 32.8% over and over again. We just can't afford to do it and allow ourselves to claim that we're for affordable housing. We just can't do it. So thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. John, can you come back out? If you want to just take a little time to go through the good debate we're having on any issues that you wanted to push back on or just address and clarify?
Yeah. So one to the point about the, the cost I presented for the material, it's an added cost for the labor. Most of the stuff in here is material that is just an upgraded version of that material. So we're already doing the work of installing the breakers for the 250-volt equipment. We're already doing the work of installing a meter socket for the house. It's just a different type of meter socket. It's just a different type of breaker. So that labor cost is truly minimal. The only thing that isn't currently being done that would be in addition would be the surge protector. And as Anna said, that might not be a life safety issue, but it does speak to the affordability issue of a, of a person once they're in a home. I think anybody that's went to the furniture mart in the last 10 years, when they bought their TV, they bought their computer, they did buy the surge protector that was with it. During that time, I think we did that to protect our investment in that equipment. During that same amount of time, all of the equipment that we have in our homes has become digital. The stove, the dryer, the refrigerator, all that is digital now. So when a surge happens at your house, you don't have surge protectors on all that equipment, but a whole home surge protector would provide that type of safety or protection for that equipment and provide for you to have a more affordable living while you're in the $470,000 house that you bought.
Can you speak to the surge issues that you're describing for appliances and things in our house that are very sensitive to surge issues? Is there issues on our national grid or Midwest or Omaha grid? Are these, do these happen more frequently now because of grid reliability issues?
Yes. So the grid is severely outdated. They're pushing more electricity through the grid than they ever have before. So much so that now, in order for me to work in a live panel, I have to wear a full-on fire retardant suit with a face mask and extra gloves, two pairs of gloves just to prevent me from being burned if the equipment was to, was to fail while I was in there. So yeah, the, the grid is completely overwhelmed. And, and the cause and effect of that is surges and parts malfunctioning. So we need to provide a safety mechanism for that.
Okay. It was mentioned, speak to, on the countertop of a home, the plug, my understanding used to be on the side. Speak to that regulation and the reason for it?
Reason being, you have a plug on the side of your island and you say you have a crock pot on the countertop. It's plugged into the side. What was happening was people were walking by, hitting the cord, catching the cord, it was falling down and burning people. So once again, a safety issue provided. Move that cord or move, move the cord away from the edge so you put it in a pop-up receptacle on the island.
So it comes up on the island, it pops up. So again, all the things that we're talking about is safety-related issues. And, and I guess in respect to, I guess Mark said, I won't speak for him, but I think he said that we're saying we no longer care about affordable housing. Well, I can speak to that, that I do care about affordable housing. And if it's $700 or $2,000, I'm the son of a teacher and a mailman. I can't afford a 500,000-hour house. But the safety aspects, certainly in my district, working-class people, I got different pockets in my district of people that struggle. But when we're talking about affordable housing, I guess I respectfully disagree. It isn't that we're pushing back on affordable housing. The question is, what safety measures do we want to have in a new house that is built? And $700 is a lot of money. $2,000 is a lot of money. But so is the balance, Lincoln, they go through their process and this body goes through our process. The minimum was done in Lincoln. And we're discussing if we want to add some things in here for safety measures. I, when it's said that we don't care about affordable housing, that's just not true. It, it's a balance of, of recognizing other things that you build a house, these components go in it. And I, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that because as this body goes forward, in weeks and months ahead to talk, I'm all for having the debate on affordable housing and, and dealing with that as we can. I'd like to make a motion to move Item 36B. That's all I have for now. Thanks, Mr. President.
Second, Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I invited Mark and Nick to come up. They're for-profit builders and they're in business to make money. They want to sell houses. They want to provide housing. Both of those guys are working out in the areas of Elkhorn that got damaged by the tornado. And, but I, I wanted to speak also to the nonprofits that are in the housing development business. This is going to affect those guys probably more than it's going to affect Nick and Mark. I, I had a chance to talk to Drew Lear from Habitat. And I said, is this, are you aware of these changes to the code? And he said, yes. And I said, is, how is it going to impact you? He said, let me get back to you. I'm going to talk to my team. He called me back last night after 5:00. And he said, Don, it does have an effect. It will increase the cost of my houses. And you can go down to all these nonprofits and ask the same question. You could go to Matt Kavanaugh, where holy name, I bet he'd say the same thing. In common, housing, mercy housing, happy development. Any one of them would say, this is going to raise the cost of housing. And it's, it takes people out of the market to be able to afford for them to do it. Right now, they, they're stacking up as many tax credits and, and funding sources that they can find just to make housing affordable for those among us that need a house. And so every time when we stack on more cost, it's making it much more difficult for those builders to produce a product that is affordable for somebody to live in. And that's our goal. We want people to live in houses. We, we know the benefit of homeownership. We know that we're short 100, well, 80,000 housing units. And, and then we want to make it more difficult. I just, I just find it hard to comprehend why we would do that when there's opportunities to safely build a house and lower the cost for our end buyer. And so I appreciate your, your indulgence on that.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. And I think, in all honesty, I think this is the wrong body that should be having this, this conversation. This should be done at the state level. When it comes to codes, this isn't something that every city should develop their own specific code. Otherwise, you have builders that may be building in Bellevue. They may be building in Papillion and Blair. And then you have to come up and make sure you're figuring out all these different codes and what is required in each different jurisdiction. Even here in Douglas County, that means you're going to have a different code for Valley, for Wahoo, and for Omaha. You, you could have a different code from one side of the street to the other. I'm all about safety issues. In fact, I'm sure all of us could come up with 10 more things that could make houses safer. I mean, even for, when you're facing fires, make sure that you install a second out for anyone that lives on the second floor. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we can do that would make our home safer. Require ring cameras and security alarms for the individual safety of the people inside. Again, we could go on and on. My point is, you need to have this discussion at the state level so that all the codes are uniform throughout the whole state. Otherwise, what we're doing is we're saying, don't build here. Because it's going to be a lot cheaper to go build on the other side of the county line, in Bellevue, in Papillion, in La Vista. It's going to be a lot cheaper. And so basically, we're telling builders, go somewhere else. And, and I think that's the wrong message. So even if I think that maybe one or all four of these things actually maybe should be required by code, I think that they need to be put in the code at the state level so that it's uniform across the entire state. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we want to have these as part of the code, go make that pitch to the state legislature to include these in the next code. Don't force them on just one city so that we have a different code than everybody else. And, and I guess that's, that's where I am at. I just don't think this is the right body to be making the argument if, because you didn't get it, what you wanted at the state level. I think go back and fight it at the state level so that we are all on the same playing field. Do you know how difficult that is for? And we've heard it from plumbing code and some others, when we have different codes for different jurisdictions, different counties, different cities in the same state. So this doesn't just apply for the Electrical Code. But I think Anna listed off, Anna, I think you said you've amended at least seven different codes since you've been here, just in the last 10 years. It's really important, whenever we have those codes, I hear from the builders and the people that are being affected by the code, just literally what they tell me, it's, I don't really care what code you have as long as you all have the same code. Just so that I can actually keep up and know what I'm, what I need to do. And I don't have to be looking at 20 different codes when I have houses being built all over. So again, it's, it's not that I'm necessarily against some of these. And I think that they may be important. And again, for some of the builders, they may be actually already doing it. And it may be a way to sell the house. Hey, we include a surge protector on this house. And, you know, so maybe you want to buy it. Again, it's making sure the code, though, is standard and uniform across the entire state. And, and so that's why I don't support having a separate code that is different in Omaha than in the other surrounding jurisdictions. Thanks. I have nothing further.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came and testified today and are having this discussion with us. I think we all here care about safety and we all here care about affordable housing. I do support Amendments A and B. A, as noted, is a technical amendment. And then B, as has been moved and seconded, just requires that we adopt the full 2023 code update from 2017, rather than having the five exceptions we're talking about here today. I do value everyone's role in this and everyone's opinion that deals with these. But it does carry weight with me when the folks that do the actual work bring this to our attention and are, and are raising these concerns. I've always supported strong local codes and that's the same today for those reasons. I do appreciate Mr. Rowe's passion. I, I share it with him about the Affordable Housing Action Plan. I, I am too frustrated we aren't further along with that. I think we've adopted one thing out of dozens of recommendations out of that report. I think as a council, we really need to push forward on those things. One, one item of which is the cost of regulation. And I am interested in that conversation. So I do want to engage MOBA on that as well. And in fact, I tried to about a year ago, reached out when that first study came out to have a discussion about it and really delve into those things and never had a call back. But I hope that'll change and that we can engage on these things going forward. And all those recommendations in that plan because they are, I think substantive and will help. And then lastly, just from a process perspective, I believe this state law was passed in August. And so we're already out of compliance with the state law and have been for several months. So I'm hopeful something passes today. In fact, something must pass, something's required to, to pass that is at least the state standard, but could be more than the state standard. Amendment B is more than the state standard. But if for some reason that, that does not pass today or if that is not ultimately enacted, there's no doubt we have to come back and pass something that is consistent with state law and do that as soon as possible. But I'm not concerned about a bunch of state inspectors coming in here in the meantime, in the next, you know, 30 to 60 days. That would have happened already. Okay. That concludes my remarks. I don't have any further lights. There's no public hearing unless somebody calls you up. There's no public hearing at this point. No, there's a motion in a second to approve Amendment B. There's no further lights? We'll be calling security if you don't sit down, Larry. There's a motion in a second to approve 36B. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
No.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Four to three.
Amendment B is approved. Is there a motion on Amendment A? A second. I don't see any, I don't see any further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
For A, yes.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
36A is approved, six to one.
So now we need a as amended, correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion as amended? A second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
No.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, four to three.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Item 37, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the Benson Business Improvement District, number 6875. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 37 is today. I will note there's an amendment of the whole. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? It's a motion for the amendment of the whole, correct?
I think the motion was to amend the whole and I seconded that motion.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 38, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the Blackstone Business Improvement District, number 6877. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 38 today, there's also an amendment of the whole. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 39, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the Dundee Business Improvement District, number 6876. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 39 is today. There's also an amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 40, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the Elkhorn Business Improvement District, number 6878. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 40 is today. Also an amendment of the whole.
Move the amendment of the whole.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 41, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on real estate within the South Omaha Business Improvement District, number 6880. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number seven, on number 41 is today. Also an amendment of the whole.
Move the amendment of the whole.
It's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 42, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary for the applications analyst. Personnel Board recommends approval. B is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
The vote on number 42 is today. An amendment of the whole is noted.
It's just an amendment.
Oh, just an amendment. So there must be a motion on amendment, and then as amended, correct?
Uh huh.
Yes. Motion to move amendment B.
I know it's an amendment.
Motion and a second on the amendment B. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Roll call. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 43, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of wastewater monitoring technician to utility monitoring technician. Personnel Board recommends approval. A is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
Vote on number 43 is today. I'll note the amendment.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 44, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classifications entitled utility maintenance scheduler and coordinator, senior utility field coordinator, and utility field coordinator. Personnel Board recommends approval. B is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
The vote on number 44 is today. Also an amendment.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classifications entitled utility heavy equipment operator, utility CCTV technician, utility equipment operator, utility construction technician, utility maintenance technician, utility locator, and utility maintenance worker. Personnel Board recommends approval. A or B is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
Vote on number 45 is today. Also an amendment.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 46, a resolution to approve the nomination of Eric Crouch Street as a commemorative street name on 144th Street from Pacific Street north approximately 1,600 feet.
The public hearing and vote on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. On Election Day 2024 here, I'll show you how I've come full circle. From September 9, 2000, sitting next to the person that introduced this, my older brother, Brian, who was a principal at Miller North that taught Eric Crouch. We sat in South Bend when Number One Nebraska played Notre Dame, and this Eric Crouch guy went 62 yards through the tackle of Rocky Boyman of Notre Dame for a 62-yard touchdown, and they broke the hearts of Notre Dame that day. And that's been a long 24 years, but I will be happy to make a motion to support this with Eric Crouch Street, legend at Miller North High School, and obviously the Nebraska Cornhuskers. So in the spirit of bipartisanship, a Notre Dame fan is glad to make a motion to support this today. Thanks.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
No.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 47, an ordinance to amend sections 24-87 through 24-105 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding the Urban Design Review Board.
Public hearing on number 47 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jed Moulton with the Planning Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Jed, just briefly, we talked about this this morning, but just for those that may be watching or I know care about urban design in the community. The Urban Design Review Board was created many years ago with the intention of improving our urban design principles privately and publicly throughout the city. This is the first time this board will have been altered since then, I believe, but I think it's your opinion that these changes would be favorable and only increase their effectiveness. Would that be accurate to say?
That's correct. Yeah, there's, it doesn't add authority or reduce authority of the board.
Great. Thank you. Next item.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve the NOTO tax increment financing redevelopment agreement.
The public hearing on number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, and I'm here for any questions you may, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Drew Sova, White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court, Suite 101. Also here to answer any questions you might have about the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 48? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm against this TIF project also. And the main reason is I want to discuss a word that's been left out of this, the statement here. According to the state auditor, ad valorem taxes, there's a word that he uses included in there that says property taxes. Ad valorem property taxes. And I cannot find a definition in the dictionary of ad valorem. So the taxpayers of this city want to know for certain, a definite, clear, non-legal answer, what is meant by ad valorem property taxes? Only the person that's going to live in that apartment building? Or only the owner of that apartment building? Or also the residents that live in that district? You always avoid that issue, and the mayor avoided, her minions avoided at an open mayor's town hall last week. Fell all over themselves and had everybody confused. So it's time to open up and admit why that word was left out, and admit that it does affect residents that live in the district, in the area, or at least across the street from these projects. I don't expect you to bill property taxes to an apartment lessy, leasing, lessor, whatever the word is. And I really don't expect all the builders and developers that get TIF to be paying full property taxes, because they get, oh, 15 years, maybe 20, maybe more, at the lower blighted value? And then after that time, the school systems that lost that money may get back some of that from the higher property taxes of who? Meantime, the lower property taxes of the owners in that area are paying the existing taxes. But it's a blighted value tax. So you're really kind of, maybe you want to, instead of going blaming the state for everything, maybe go to the state and ask them to help clarify that law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 48? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to approve the designation of an enhanced employment area for NOTO.
Public hearing on number 49 is today. Proponents, please.
Once again, Drew Sova, 10404 Essex Court, Suite 101, on behalf of White Lotus Group, here to answer any questions as a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.